I think we'll go ahead and get started. And I know that our city clerk Kelly is working with councillor Thomas to get him into the Zoom meeting. We have a COVID-19. One, I want to say welcome to everybody tonight. This is Iowa City Council work session for Tuesday, June 2, 2020. And as many of us know, there's lots happening throughout our community. We still have COVID-19 that is very prevalent, although the numbers today look really good at zero in Johnson County, but we do know and expect a change there. So we'll just put a plug out to everyone to do what you can to remember the safety measures of COVID-19. I also want to just take a moment and acknowledge what's happening throughout our nation in response to the death of George Floyd. And when we start our formal meeting tonight, I do plan to have some words there then on that, but I at least wanted to take a moment to state that our nation is hurting and that's a reality. And hopefully, we will be able to communicate better on issues such as this and bring real resolution. So with that being said, I'm going to open up our floor to two doctors from the University of Iowa that's going to talk to us a little bit about face shields from some of the information that they've learned. And we have Dr. Eli. How do you pronounce your last name?
Perensovich.
Perensovich, great. And we have Dr. Michael Edmund. And so, welcome to both of you. And I'm looking forward to this opportunity to hear from you in this setting. I know that Dr. Eli and I have had communications several times on this topic. So please feel free to talk to us tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Teague and councillors and all. I guess I'll start and then Mike interrupt and chime in. So I've been a part of the University of Iowa College of Public Health modeling group. We've been creating, I'm an infectious disease physician, epidemiologist, and part of my role with COVID has been working with this modeling group, College of Public Health. And we've been kind of projecting the outbreak and most of us feel there'll be a second peak sometime, perhaps in the fall, perhaps now. We don't fully understand this virus. It's a totally new virus. There could be some seasonal benefit that we're seeing now, but we're not quite sure. But we know we have to be prepared and as groups of us have been talking about how to prepare for a second wave and save our economy and keep our businesses open, get our schools open and universities open, we started looking at the success we've had at University of Iowa hospitals and clinics. Several months ago, Mike Edmund and his group purchased 13,000 face shields and distributed them to all the healthcare workers there. They've been well received and as we've looked, not only at the data at University of Iowa Hospital, but across the country, probably the best data is from New York City. It appears that probably the safest place to work is in healthcare. The lowest infection rates in New York City are among healthcare workers. Surprising, you probably are all like, I don't believe you, but it ends up being true. The lowest risk of those in serology studies, so antibody immunity, so people that haven't been exposed at all the virus are in intensive care unit doctors, then all doctors, then nurses, then other healthcare workers, and then other staff in the hospital. And all of those are lower than community rates of transmission. And so, the way I interpreted that is PPE works. We know that masks and face shields and goggles and gloves and gowns and all the preparation we do protects healthcare workers. And so, if it works there, you know, there are a lot more essential workers than just doctors and nurses. Why don't we think about the entire country as essential, nursing homes, any business, particularly meatpacking, I think we could realize you might want to get PP'd there. And so, kind of coming from that, I think we need to have a discussion as a state and community about how to get personal protective equipment to all our citizens in a safe way. And so, that's why face shields came up because they're sustainable, you know, like masks, you have to burn through one a day. Cotton masks you can make, but they're very uncomfortable to wear for long periods, they're hard to breathe. I can't walk up more than five, four or five flights of stairs without pretty much dying in a cotton mask, which doesn't happen in a face shield or, you know, a medical mask. And so, we think it's an effective way to protect the community. We wanted to kind of throw that out as an idea for the Iowa City to think about purchasing and distributing face shields to the community. Purchase price, they're pretty affordable, anywhere from $1.60 to $5, probably for good versions of sustainable face shields that can be washed in soap and water or with a Clorox wipe. And we think this will protect people almost as well as the PPE we have in hospitals. And clearly, the risk of exposures far less in the community than hospitals apart from maybe meatpacking. So we think this is something we should discuss as a community. So I'll stop, Mike. I don't know, few other things to add. Is your mic not working, Mike? He can't unmute himself.
I'm sure our technical people are working on it.
Can I ask a question while they're trying to work on that? What kind of a source would there be? I mean, if we were to look at some kind of community-wide program of doing some sort of a bulk purchase where then community members could buy those from the city or for people who can't afford it, we provided them to them, I mean, we're talking, you know, 70,000-plus people potentially. What kind of a source, how hard would it be to source that many?
Yeah, we started to look into that. There's a company in Cedar Rapids that contacted us. We published a paper in JAMA, Journal of American Medical Association, and so we're getting a bunch of emails from across the country about, will you look at our face shields? There's a company in Cedar Rapids that has 150,000 on pallets. I know Mike, Dr. Edmund's looked at those and thought they were a pretty high quality. Can't remember the exact cost of those. I think it was under $10 for those. So they have 150,000. I think it's something like they can make 10,000 a day. And then there's also a company, I was just told, one of our palliative care doctors has shared one with me that's made in Des Moines and they can make thousands a day. So I think it's more about, I think the reason it's nice to talk about now is Mayor Teague said, we don't have a lot of infections right now, but if we plan ahead and purchase ahead, so we have them by fall, when we think this is going to pick up, we shouldn't have trouble sourcing them, but it's an important question. And those, I think this Des Moines ones, they're, I think I had it here, this face shield, I think they're $2.60 each, this version. It's kind of nerdy, but anyway. So yeah, so kind of the range, I think, $1.60 to under $10.
We can continue that conversation, but I wanted to just let Dr. Edmund know that we believe that you may have not connected to audio in Zoom. So maybe at the bottom of your screen, there's a little, maybe a little up cursor or something that, next to the mic.
I just want to ask you a question when you, oh, did I, okay. Did you say that we can use the shield without the mask or it has to be both?
We feel in the community, you could just wear a face shield. If a well-designed face shield, you would not need to wear a mask. And that has a lot of advantages for children, people that are hard of hearing, and perhaps others. We feel it's a more kind of open, more humane personal protective equipment in the community.
Yeah, because as you said, the cotton shield, yesterday I tried to put it on my mom while we're going to vote, and she was like, I can't breathe well on this. So I think, yeah, the shield will be working very good because you're going to get air from around.
Right, it's much more natural to breathe with a face shield. It's like wearing a baseball cap or glasses, really, kind of big ugly glasses, I guess.
Exactly, yeah, thank you.
Dr. Edmund, I think we really do want to hear from you. What I might suggest is you sign out and sign back in. And sometimes that fixes the issue. So I know that I've been wearing face shields and personally, I'm going to use councillor Weiner's terminology, I find them liberating. It's very freeing, you can navigate with them throughout the community and not, I don't know, I have mine right here, so. I have several. But they are pretty nice and this one, I understand, was only a dollar to make. So there are certainly some that have more simplistic properties, materials being used than others. So I love it. I think it's been working great. The research that you all have done, oh, Dr. Edmund, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yeah, the only thing that I would add to what Eli has said is the, one of the real advantages of the face shield is that it protects your eyes. So when people wear masks, they really aren't getting eye protection. And we know from this virus that the way it's transmitted is primarily through droplets. And in order to become infected, a droplet has to touch your eye, your nose, or your mouth. Those are the three ways that the virus gets into the body. So the face shield is a way to protect all three of those sites.
So for the public out there, because I know that the biggest question is, is the face shield sufficient? When would it be appropriate for you to wear face shield and mask?
Mike, do you want to go?
So I would say, I think it depends on your risk tolerance. I don't think you really need it. So I will say, as an infectious disease doctor, when I go to the grocery store, I wear my shield and I don't wear a mask with it. And I feel very comfortable and I feel protected doing that. I think if somebody feels like they want more protection than what a shield could provide, you could add a mask to that. I don't see a real problem with doing that, though I don't think you necessarily need to do that.
When it comes down to healthcare and direct personal care, is that there is a difference there, so.
In the hospital setting, we do things to patients that create aerosols. And that's a whole different story. And in that situation, even the face masks, the medical face masks are really not enough for that situation. We have to use these N95 respirator masks if we are generating an aerosol in the hospital. We still wear shields on top of the N95 mask because the N95 mask doesn't protect the eyes.
I think the other benefit of face shields, even in those situations, or if you wanted to wear a mask, like if you had a risk tolerance that made you feel more comfortable wearing a mask, is that it protects you from touching your face. And then when you remove your mask, your mask isn't contaminated because it's been covered by a shield the whole time. And one of the biggest risk factors, we think, is people touching their face or touching a dirty mask and then touching their face while they're removing the mask. And so, it's just an added layer of protection. I think if I was someone in a higher-risk group, you know, especially someone in a nursing home or had to go out or with a lot of comorbid conditions, or someone in their 70s or 80s, I would definitely wear, you know, both probably, just to be on the safe side. But we think, and when we modeled this, even if, and we think masks are probably 90-plus percent effective in blocking droplets from reaching your face, especially well-designed ones. The one that was tested in the best study was a really crappy throwaway one, not like the good ones we would recommend. But even if the masks, the face shields were only about 50% effective, we could eliminate the virus. It's practically like a vaccine because as soon as you cut off transmission, if enough of us have them, we could really, you know, keep this under control. And masks would work the same way, but they only protect others, they don't protect you. So it's a double benefit from face shields. They protect you and others by containing and blocking.
Yeah, I'll just pick up on that, what Eli said. To stop the outbreak, you don't need an intervention that's 100% effective. From a public health perspective, that, we don't need to take it that far. And what I remind people about all the time is that we really push influenza vaccine every year, and that vaccine's 40% effective on average. It's not near 100% effective, but yet we see benefit in the community from people doing that. So, you know, I think it's how you look at it, you might come to different conclusions. If you look at it from an individual perspective, am I protected? Then you make a decision about whether you think the shield is enough or whether you want to add a face mask to that. But if you're looking at it from a population perspective, from a public health perspective, you don't need an intervention that's 100% effective to stop the outbreak.
Are you aware of any of the suppliers around here that have smaller shields that would for, say, for kids and smaller kids? I mean, I ended up getting one for a two-year-old off the internet, but there are a lot of kids, you know, there are school kids, there are middle school kids, there are people who do not, whose heads and faces are not, they would be dwarfed by the size of the ones that we're getting for us.
I don't know about local suppliers. I do know, I've seen multiple vendors online that have them, and they have all kinds of fun ones, you know, that have, make your face look like a cat or a princess or whatever, you know, you want to be, to try to get, to encourage kids to wear them. So they are available. I'll just add on, because this is when I was muted and I couldn't unmute, but when you were talking about different vendors, I've been contacted by several different companies. Most of these are actually small companies who have retrofit their production lines to start making face shields. There's, for example, there's a company in Cleveland, it's called Cleveland Menu Company. They make menus for restaurants, those plastic things that you put the menu in, and now they're making face shields. And they've made actually several different models of face shields. And theirs are, when you buy them, you know, at volume, they're like $1.75. And they've sent me some of them, so I've tried them, and they're really decent quality ones that would last you.
I also want to ask you, I guess, help me understand that, understand you're right. You said, as the mayor said, we don't have like numbers of increasing today, but I know that the people in the community understand that this is going to go away by like maybe the end of the year, but I hear you saying this will pick up again by the winter. Is there a great possibility this is really going to pick up again during full-on winter?
Yeah, I think that's a really strong possibility because we, it hasn't gone away. So it's, we're still having in a state, I can't remember the numbers today, but there are 200 or 300 cases a day even now. And so, it's not going away. And then we have no immunity, probably less than 1% of people in Iowa are immune. So if it's there, it's going to spread. There's nothing magical. I am impressed with people in Johnson County and Lynn County because people are social distancing, even though they're moving around more. I mean, people are definitely keeping their six feet, they're doing a lot more things outside, they're definitely washing their hands, there's a lot of mask wearing, which is why I think face shields will work here. I've started to see face shields pop up at Costco and Trader Joe's when I've gone and the co-op. So I think it's a good place to do it, but it will come back. I think there's no one that thinks this will disappear until there's a vaccine. Coronavirus, we don't really understand, but coronavirus is the traditional ones or the seasonal ones that come with a common cold are all gone by May. I mean, just totally gone. And clearly, this virus is all over the place in every state even now. So we don't think it's going to go away. It may go a little, become a little less prevalent in the summer, but it won't go away.
I think what I've heard too is that, and maybe you can clarify this, that this one is somewhat unique in that it has more of a contact transmission effect, so that that would encourage folks to wear the face shields because if you don't have that person-to-person conduction of the actual virus, that will help. It might still be out there, but your numbers will stay low, which is what we'd like to see. We don't want to see the numbers escalating, right?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's spread by droplet and contact, so sneezes and coughs. And then the, so if directly you cough on someone, in fact, almost happened to me a couple, a week ago now, I was wearing my face shield in Walgreens where a person just let go of sneeze like three feet from me. Fortunately, I had my face shield on. And so, if that would have landed on my mouth or nose or eyes, I would become infected. And then, or if what they sneezed on was something and then I touched it and touched my face, then I could have gotten infected as well. So droplets in the air directly with cough and sneeze within six feet, or if you touch something right after they sneeze, you might pick up enough to become sick. But mostly the sneezes and coughs that we think, and speaking and singing in choirs and things like this are big risk factors.
Well, thank you all for coming on and sharing about face shields and how they can help decrease our risk. Really appreciate hearing this and thanks for all the work that you do in our community for those that are ill and bringing some more opportunities for regaining of health. So thanks for all that you do. And yeah, I appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Teague and councillors. Let us know if we can be of further assistance.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, we are still open to COVID-19 updates. I don't know if anyone has any updates or if anyone from the city staff wants to give an update.
Mayor, I can just give a brief service update to you. And before I do that, I'll just mention, we have, as a city, procured about 1,100 face shields just for our employees. Some of those, about 400 through the emergency operations center, and then we've purchased 700 ourself for employees. And right now, we have about 450 of those distributed, so employees can request those. They're not mandatory. Masks are mandatory or coverings, face coverings are mandatory for our employees, but we do give them the option. But clearly, with 450 already distributed face shields are a popular choice for our employees. And I think as the weather warms and people get used to the differences in comfort, we'll see more of those face shields go. So I'll put a plug in there for our experience so far. Quick service level update again. Our public works operations are pretty much back to full speed. We have the landfill back open. In this week, we resumed our white goods or bulky waste pickup at Curbside that can be done by appointment now again. Our transportation services operations are also slowly getting back to full speed. We do have our parking system back up, so there are charges in the ramps and we do have enforcement again downtown. That has been going well. We are gearing up for a return to our normal transit service, our summer transit service on June 15th, which will include a return to front boarding and fare collection as well. Busy time in parks with lots of changes the past couple of weeks. Yesterday, we reopened playgrounds. We have caution signs at those playgrounds, but they are open. We have lap swimming that we hope to start on June 15th at Mercer. The council knows we're doing a lighting project in the pool area, so we want to make sure we get that project complete, get the pool filled back up and get the state to inspect it. But right now, it looks like we should be on track for the 15th if all those things fall into place. We'll have limited capacity and it'll be by appointment only, but we will be able to accommodate those that are missing the opportunity to swim. And then they are gearing up for some programming as well. And programming is going to look a lot different this summer, as you might imagine, be smaller groups, bigger areas, mostly utilizing outdoor areas, not indoor areas. But some of that will be announced here shortly. We do intend to resume our party in the parks and we'll be using larger parks this year. So starting in June, targeting June 18th, we'll look at some of our regional parks that allow people to spread out a little bit more. So City Park and Riverfront Crossings, Willow Creek and Mercer are some good examples of the parks we'll be utilizing this summer for some programming. Happy to answer any questions you have about our services. Otherwise, we'll just turn the floor back over to the mayor.
All right, well, thanks for the update. Any other items for COVID-19 that councillors want to talk about?
I do. Well, it's not a different one, but given the presentation that we just had, I'm curious what other councillors think about trying to start a program, and I'm not saying the city does this by themselves, but to really educate the community about the benefits and maybe even additional safety of the face shields versus masks. And potentially even, you know, with other organizations doing some sort of fundraising to buy shields, to encourage people to, you know, like buy two to give one away to somebody who can't afford it. It just seems to me that as we go forward, I think people are getting really tired of the face masks. I mean, theoretically, you could even go out to a restaurant and eat with a face shield on. If you're using a straw, you could probably drink, you know, those sorts of things. So it just seems like it could be a big improvement and maybe, I know they're a little bulk here to carry around, but if you're going to wear your mask or shield all the time you're out in public anyway, I don't know, it's just a thought off the top of my head after listening to that presentation, but it's something that I would be interested in having us think about pursuing a little bit more.
Ms. Pauline, I agree with Susan. When councillor Thomas and I were walking Willow Creek with some neighbors there, one of the ladies had been making masks and as we walked along, if she saw some joggers that weren't wearing masks, she offered it to them and they took it. They were very grateful and put them on. So I think if we have some kind of a program where we educate folks about the shields and partner with a group to be able to provide these shields, I think we will see people being able to wear them and wear them out in public.
I agree with that. And I think specifically, Susan, I don't know if the Better Together group has addressed face shields specifically, but I reached out to the Masks of Wellness folks several weeks ago, I think before even Eli and Michael's article in JAMA was published, that just said, are you thinking about face shields as being an alternative for businesses who could be sort of certified in that program? And I think if that's tied into the Better Together initiative, I think that would be really great. So hopefully with the science a little more simplified, we could push that again.
I think that's a good idea. No, we haven't talked about that yet at the Better Together, but I think that's a good place where we could maybe initiate some things.
I also heard that city manager Jeff said before, this is, you can buy, you was planning on buying, oh, no, no, like ideas. You was providing ideas that we can buy some of the mask, instead we can do the shield. Instead, we can do the shield, especially you have this money coming and we know this is something that, that's a good cause to use it for. Also, that's an option we can use for the Iowa City resident.
I've been a, a big face shield fan for quite a while now. I started, I started wearing it pretty early on in the grocery store. I got a few outlooks and I thought, what do I care? They can see me, I can see them, I can't touch my face. My glasses don't fog up, even if, and so there, to me, also anyone who is hearing impaired can still see my lips. And that to me is also when we're talking about inclusivity, that's also a very important point.
So it sounds like maybe if Better Together, Council of MEMS, you're on that committee. So that's something that maybe you all can navigate and kind of get back and let us know if there's anything our city council or city needs to do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll mention it and might reach out to some of you individually and see what other contacts you have and, and how, how we might want to coordinate this and not, I'm not trying to just dump it on city staff, but look at some way that, and I think that Better Together group is really trying to do a lot of community-wide and it's more than just Iowa City. It's really all Johnson County. And of course we all interact with each other in various places. So we'll kind of start there. I'll reach out to some of you and get some ideas and maybe we can figure out a way to kind of get a program going, both educationally, but also some sort of a purchase program. Again, we're maybe people who can afford them by their own and maybe encourage them to donate another, enough for another one or two for people who can't afford them. So I'll reach out to you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Ashley kind of leading us down this road once again on the strategic plan for 2020, for 2021. So.
Okay. Well, thank you. We are getting close here. Last, uh, last work session, we, I'm going to work on sharing my screen, but last work session, we got close to finishing here. The, the general overtone of the discussion and in light of COVID and, and really all other activities happening today. There was an interest in inciting the health condition also of our residents. And so we drafted this statement that will be paired with our original kind of statement. The strategic plan intends to foster a more inclusive, just and sustainable Iowa City. And it adds, by prioritizing the physical, mental and economic wellbeing of all residents. That's a statement that is up for discussion by council. If it's detailed enough or specific to your wishes and what you're planning to convey. This, um, this explainer kind of just starts the plan or, or the, the strategic plan document. So it's the header and then we would have some type of graphic that is improved upon my, my draft there that identifies each of our priorities. And then it goes into the specific, uh, the specific strategies that, that you've identified, you know, the, the bulleted items. So if you want to discuss that first segment, then, um, once we finish that, we'll just, uh, jump to that last section that we haven't done yet.
I really like that header. I, I think it hits on virtually everything. I mean, when we've talked about more inclusive, just, we talk about sustainable. And when you talk about people's health, it is, it's the physical, it's mental. And so much of that then also becomes their economic opportunities and, and economic wellbeing. So I don't know who came up with the wording, but I certainly like it.
My only suggestion would be, there, and there are a couple of places where it could go in, would be to consider inserting the word equitable as well, just the word equitable.
Yes, I agree with Janice.
Okay, we can certainly fit the equitable somewhere within that statement to make sure that we're including that as well. Okay, good. I'll move on. We've been through the, the, the couple of sections here, that advancing human rights, climate action, engagement with the community and intergovernmental relations, investing in public infrastructure or fiscal circumstances. We did slightly modify based on council's discussion, this foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city. We modified that first initiative to identify new efforts to expand and, and adapt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet long-term needs throughout the community. So we've included identifying new and meet long-term needs. So thoughts or further discussion about this one?
I think this was one John kind of chimed in on and I think it does, what I remember, of what I remember does meet kind of the discussion goal.
Okay. I think we worked on the language during the meeting and, and sort of came to a consensus about it. So that's reflected there. Okay. We did not make changes to enhancing community mobility for all residents. And then we left this final section about inclusive and, and inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. So there were some ideas thrown out there last meeting and we came up with the following three. Through collaboration with local partners, increase opportunities for marginalized and low-income populations to obtain access to skills training, good jobs and affordable childcare. So we included the, the childcare component and slimmed down specifying who those partners were from the prior strategic plan. The next one is encourage healthy, diverse and sustainable economic activity throughout Iowa City, including taking steps to invigorate neighborhood commercial districts and create new small neighborhood commercial nodes. So there are pieces of, of the wider neighborhood commercial districts and then those little neighborhood gems that we like to think we could grow. And then finally it's to effectively market and grow the local foods economy and small locally owned businesses. So those are for, up for discussion and we'll take notes on anything you want to talk about.
So at the, at the demonstration last on Saturday, one of the things that one of the speakers noted is that, and I don't know if it's a hundred percent correct, is that there are no black or minority owned businesses downtown? Is that correct?
That's not, that's not true. Cindy and Kelly owns the Makers Loft and that's downtown. So that is inaccurate.
Okay, good. That's right. But I was just wondering if we should, if we should somehow basically up the ante on that some and just have a word or two in there about also the supporting or support from minority owned small businesses as well.
I don't know if our city staff know, but we can see their screen, the IT staff. There we go.
I was taking notes. Okay, so we are including the minority owned businesses potentially within that, that second objective there? Or, or in that third?
I was thinking about in the third, but someone else may have, have a better idea or a better, better way to include it. I just wanted to throw that out.
Certainly.
Just a suggestion, I, I would, um, I would put that as a, as a, as, as maybe break that third bullet, bullet up. The way it reads right now and the way that I, at least I was understanding it was effectively market and grow the local foods economy and small locally owned businesses. It almost sounds like the small locally owned businesses is also tied to the food economy. So if you just want to promote, promote minority businesses in general and be very expansive with the definition of what types of businesses those are, then I, I would break that out separately. And you may or may not still want to keep the small locally owned business piece. And maybe we should take the opportunity to clarify whether that's tied to local foods or not.
I just believe it's not supposed to be tied to local food only. Like yes, as my understanding what Council Janice said is just in general, like minority owned business in general.
Then I think we'll just break that out into a separate bullet if that's okay.
Yeah, I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, either a separate bullet or, I don't know if you want to get bullets under bullets, but what you could do with that third one is effectively market and grow, semicolon, and then kind of three bullets underneath it. The local foods economy, small locally owned businesses, minority owned businesses. Cause you, to me, it seems like we're talking about the same thing, but three different categories of businesses. But I'm, that was just a suggestion, right? I don't want to try and work through the whole thing here.
I guess that's work. Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else with this one that we think we want to change? It, it looks pretty good to me now what the changes.
I don't see the changes.
Oh, they're, they'll bring the changes back. They're writing it down now.
Okay. But I agree with Susan on like, yeah, it's look, look good. Yeah, we can do that.
So what we will do is finalize these changes in the document. And then the next time you see this, it'll be in resolution form and we'll ask you to formally adopt it. And that'll be our, our, our permission to get going on, on this at the staff level.
Sure. Sounds good.
All right. Anything else on this, Ashley?
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you all the staff putting this, thanks for your persistence.
Right. Patience and persistence.
Yes, yes.
Thank you to staff and yes, probably especially you, Ashley. You've done, done a lot of heavy lifting with a lot of the wording here probably. So thank you.
Jeff, Jeff has pitched in plenty. So thank you to everyone.
Thanks to you too, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
We're excited about it. We'll, we'll get it back to you the next meeting. Thanks.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, thanks to you, Ashley, for your persistence and patience through this process. So, all right, we are on to clarification of agenda items for our tonight meeting, which starts at seven. Again, I did want to just make mention that towards the beginning of the meeting, I will make some statements related to George Floyd. And I have also, or we, we also will have some representatives from our police department, which will be Campbell, our chief Campbell, who will come and present. And we will also have the union, someone from the union, if I understand correctly.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, so we will, I will do that at the beginning of our formal meeting tonight. If nothing else from the formal agenda, then we'll move on to FO packets, May 21st.
I'm just glad to see with IP two, we've talked about this before, but the increase in vouchers and increase in budget authority for housing. So glad to see that.
Info packet, May 28th. And I know IP five, the memo from the Neighborhood and Development Services about the eviction protection update for both tenants and owners of houses. I don't know if there's anyone that can give us an update. I don't know if anyone.
Mayor, I can, I can speak briefly to this. Tracy H Chu and the NDS staff has been working on a, the kind of a bridge program, if you will, based on, based on the last discussion or based on discussion at the last council meeting. So what we're looking at is a, a period of, of, of time while the state program is being launched. And before the CDBG dollars are available, we want to make sure there's rental assistance to anybody facing emergent situations. Now, we don't believe that there's going to be a, in, in eviction crisis, if you will, in the month of June because of some of the protections and the CARES Act and, and just the, the nature of restarting operations at the courthouse. So, but we don't want to wait until there is that crisis either. So what we're looking at here is allocating $50,000, which is a fairly small amount, given the magnitude of the problem, but $50,000 of local funds for emergency housing relief. And this could include some utility relief too, if there's emergent utility issues that, that are, that someone is facing, like a disconnect type of situation. And what this again would be, what, what we would do is work with our, our nonprofit partners. I think right now we're working with the Shelter House on this program. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to split the $50,000 up, but we would work with the Shelter House to make sure that this $50,000 is available. We would then broadcast that through other nonprofits that would work with folks that would need this assistance. So they know that that's there. And then again, hopefully that fills a gap for a few weeks. And, and by that time, we hope to get the CDBG dollars rolled out. We still don't have the final okay from the federal government to roll out our CDBG allocation, but we hope that is coming. And that will then provide a more substantial amount of rent relief. And, and after that, we'll, we will kind of have a, a better handle on the situation because the state program will have been out for several weeks. The CDBG program will have been put out, will have local funds. There could be a need for more local funds and, and staff will come back to you and, and give you that assessment after talking with some of our providers who are, uh, working with the public that, that has these needs. So this is just more of an information, informational item for you. We'd love any guidance that you have because we, we don't have our agreements executed on how we would spend this $50,000. But again, it's a, it's, it's looked at as a bridge type of program for, for, uh, uh, very emergent circumstances. And we are targeting those that are not eligible for the state program. So we're still pushing anybody that's eligible to the state program onto that program first. But if you are not eligible for the state, we want to help you through this local program if you're facing an emergency.
I just want to ask you, you just said the $50,000 for the people who are not eligible for the state program. That what you're thinking?
Yes, that's correct. If you're eligible for the state program, then we would, uh, through, again, through our partners, we would help you apply for those funds. through, again, through our partners, we would help you apply for those funds and secure those funds. But if you're not eligible or if you're, or if you're denied, I should, I should add that. If you're denied for some reason, if they run out of their funds immediately or there's some other circumstances where you don't get the funds, then, then we could look to help you through our local program.
But if this, if we want this to start as soon as possible, because we know that the state programs would take maybe a while, how, how are we going to know that the people are being denied it or if the people are not eligible or not? Is there is a criteria or policy that in place?
Yeah. So the, the state program's already been launched and so we know the criteria that's out there and we can, again, through the, through our, our providers, help people apply and then we'll know right away if they're not eligible. There's some circumstances that we know right off the bat, they're not going to be eligible. If you're receiving the extra $600 a month in unemployment insurance, you're not eligible for the state program. If you're an undocumented resident of our community, you're not eligible. So those people would immediately go to the front of the line for our, our local program if there's an emergency there.
So Jeff, do we have any sort of a ballpark figure of how many you think there might be? Or maybe Mazza here through your work with CWJ, you have some idea of how many perhaps undocumented folks out there might qualify for this program?
To be honest with you, because we are giving people not only Iowa City residents. You know, just from my home to yours program that we, we launched it and we raised around $80,000 that we distributed to the people who are not eligible for stimulus check, we have, we distributed to 140 family so far. But some of them, of course, are not Iowa City residents, but most of them are.
I just had one policy question that I'd raised to Jeff. I want to make sure that we do, that we're, you know, not not adding any barriers to the program because the intent of this is to help folks who may not be eligible for other, other benefits. But just as far as the logistics of it, to make sure I understand correctly, any of these funds are not going directly to families. They would be going directly to the landlords. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
And so I had just raised the question of is there, is there some mechanism for when we're spending, you know, city, city funds, is there some mechanism for ensuring that we're not subsidizing, I guess what I would call sort of profit on, on the landlords? And I know that that's a fraught issue and probably way too complicated for something that we're trying to roll out very quickly, but you know, when, when we provide assistance of any kind with public dollars direct to individuals or families, there are so many requirements and qualifications typically that it's just an interesting policy issue that I wanted to raise and see if you had any thoughts on from the staff level.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's a really difficult one. We've started talking about that internally. I had a, a side conversation with Shelter House on that as well. And I think we all recognize exactly what you're trying to, to, to get at here. We're just haven't figured out the best way frankly to, to address that yet. So with, with this pot of funds, we don't have any type of protection like that built in. We do require that the landlord verify that, you know, they're, that they, the rent is in arrears and that they, they'll certify that they will not pursue eviction. So there's landlord certifications in there that, that have to accompany our, our, our assistance, but we, we don't have any type of mechanism right now for a, a financial kind of health check for the, for whoever the landlord is.
I really, Councilor, if you don't mind, if you can tell me exactly what you are worried about, because I couldn't, I really, I, I started getting my, my connection wasn't good and I couldn't understand exactly what you are worried about. Especially that my understanding the check will be written to the landlord. But I guess you said something else. Maybe I didn't understand fully understand.
I don't, well, I don't think I said it very, very clearly either. My, my concern, so when we provide public assistance to individuals and families from, not necessarily directly from the city, but just the idea of providing that assistance, there's all these requirements of need, right? A family or an individual has to substantiate their need with sometimes very invasive and complicated application processes. And so when this money is going directly to the landlord, my question was, do we have any way of ensuring that we're not subsidizing what I would call profit for the landlord, that there is some need? And so Jeff articulated that at least the landlord does have to say that the rent has not been paid and that they will not be pursuing eviction. So I, my concern was more that we're not just funneling public dollars to a landlord who, who isn't actually missing out on the financial need of their rent.
Okay, get you. Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I guess from, and I, I hear what you're saying and I do think that it's appropriate that we have the landlord certify and but for me, I think we stopped there. We just saw our entire nation get some funds through PPE. I'm sorry, PPP. Where e- essentially there were companies that are billionaires, billions and trillions of dollars was able to get some of that money with, without very little question. Now, we're not the nation. We're, we're not the White House, you know, distributing those monies. Of course, we probably would have had a little more. Where's the need associated with the funds that we're releasing? But those funds were given out with very little requirements. And I think when we often look at individuals with need, sometimes we ask too many questions. And I'm not saying that what you're, you know, ours is saying is inappropriate at all, but I think we, we stop there personally. We stop at having the landlord certify. And if they certify, if there is any type of underhanded, trying to get over on the government, I think we just leave it at that, knowing that our good was, our intentions are to do good and to help people in the quickest, least invasive way possible.
I was just going to say about this, Mayor, is that, you know, my experience of helping people with the shelter house or with the crisis center, I know that they have system in place whenever you come and apply for a benefit, like for example, for the revenue housing or for the, for the, yes, crisis, at the crisis center where you apply for utility help. Usually you have to bring a bill that, you know, showing that you are past the year. And they, they will provide with, before they write the check to the, you know, to, to the utility company or to the landlord of paying the rent. So I think they already have a mechanism. They are to make sure that they are not doing, like they are not just subsidizing somebody who are not in need. I understand your concern, but you know, hopefully we can just minimize the question and let those people handle this the way that they used to handle it. I guess they have very good system in place, you know, we don't need to worry.
Great. Any other item from May 28th? Info packet. All right. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees. Even during COVID-19, there's been work still being done.
Well, I think most of us, of course, except for you, Mayor, since the mayor doesn't sit in on it, went to the, or attended the Zoom MPO meeting recently, last week. Major item was again, the federal aid swap program, which the majority present felt that there still was not enough supportive data to, for our group to opt in. We've been asking the last couple of times it's come before us for, for data, particularly any sort of financial reason to, to opt into this. Which is like for roads and bridge projects with the federal funds being swapped for state funds. So the majority of the folks did vote to opt out again this year. So it'll, it'll come before us again, but we can, we'll continue to opt out of that program. Jeff and I continue to sit in on the Friday Better Together meetings. And I think Jeff has probably given as good a synopsis of that as, as I could in his Friday email. So I'll just, if you didn't read that, refer you back to his Friday email just to save us some time. I think he was pretty complete in his description of our, of our conversations.
We had an EC cog meeting also by Zoom. The, the, almost the irony of this is that the, because of the CARES Act funding, EC cog is going to, is going to end up in better shape financially than it has been. So there, there won't be, they won't be in deficit. And they'll be able to actually work on it on the fiscal year without having to worry about that. And for people who are not in, within Iowa City, there, the housing portion of what they do that run by Tracy Achenbach has some funds as well that they're reaching out to some of the smaller communities on.
Okay. Here are no other updates. I guess we will be back at 7:00 PM to, for our formal meeting.